Follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. If there is any for this meeting of the Ludenberg Public Library Board of Trustees is being convened by Zoom as posted on the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that other folk may be able to see you and take care not to share your computer screen. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Our ground rules, we are now turning to the first item, the agenda before we do so permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Bob, I Harry Kubetz, the chair will introduce the speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks, the chair will get down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversations with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows, the chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call upon each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote, which I will be doing in alphabetical order of last name. So I would like to take a roll call at this point. Laura.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Dick.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Donna. So we assumed Donna is not here, but may join Maya.
Maya is just connecting.
Okay. So. Hey, Maya. You're when she's on, will you let me know?
Looks like she's connected.
Hey, Maya. We just called your name. Are you here?
I am here.
Okay, Harry Kubetz present. Muir.
Muir is present.
And Michael Ray. Okay, so at the moment we're missing Donna. I'm sorry, you're here?
I'm here.
Ah, hey, how are you, sir?
Doing well, thank you.
Um, okay, so we were just shy Donna at this moment in time. So thank you all for joining. First, do we have any public comment?
I have.
Yes.
Back in December, after our last meeting, there was a post on Facebook in one of the, you know, the groups at the town people have set up. And the question they asked was who in Ludenberg do you want to give thanks to? And one person specifically said Debbie at the library for always having great programs in place for the kids. And somebody else just said the library staff in general. So that was a nice thing to read on Facebook.
Really nice.
Yeah. I don't know if Debbie's on there or not.
Muir, will you pass it along, please?
I would be happy to let Debbie and the rest of the staff know about that. Thank you for sharing, Laura.
Are there any other comments? So next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of December 17. And Bob, thank you for getting those out quickly, which we needed to do for town manager.
Sure.
So thank you. Has everyone had a chance to go through the minutes?
I have a clarification.
You're muted.
Yeah, Muir, you cut out.
Apologies.
No, I don't think you said anything.
So I have a clarification on the second bullet point under the director's report section.
Yep.
It says there the heating season is underway and is costing a little less than last year. And I would change that to make it clear that our expenses are less due to some HVAC issues that we've had. Rather than costing less, in fact, once the HVAC issues were fixed, we are about 20% higher, a rate of about 20% higher than last year.
Should I just remove that sentence?
No, I think it's important to note. Expenses are lower, were lower at that point. Because of the HVAC issues, we waited for waited for some HVAC issues to be fixed.
I think you can simplify it and say a malfunction furnace.
Sure, absolutely. That would be fine with me, but I do think it's important to put in there.
I hope you're not keeping it too warm now, Muir.
No, it's not. It's comfortable.
So quick question.
Kate, please.
When you said 20% higher, you just meant from the low point, not over last year, for example.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a little pumpkin baby.
He's adorable.
He's like, I haven't been in this room for a while. He doesn't know where the people are.
A future library trustee.
We don't have masks on.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
He looks great. Happy boy.
Yeah.
Yes. He's doing well.
Thank you.
So Muir, can I read that sentence to you and see if it sounds okay?
Yes.
The heating season is underway and costs were lower than last year due to a malfunctioning furnace, but are now back to normal.
I would say expenses are lower due to the malfunction. And since those repairs have been made, the rate wasn't the cost has gone up. And to answer your question, Kate, there it's not. So this report would have been December, so for the bills for October and November, which would have been paid in December. Those two months were you know, about 20% higher than those two months during the preceding year.
Okay.
Okay.
Which is, you know, that kind of that part of it, I think, does not need to be in our minutes, but it does answer the question that was asked.
Okay.
So I would expect to what I what I projected for our FY22 budget is that we're not going to end up saving any expenses will not be lower than last year.
Okay.
For heating at least.
Okay.
Are there any other comments? Okay, well, I have a comment. Under Friends of LPL update. So two thirds of the way through. The first bullet, the bullet point about the Tart family. Where it says they are looking to simplify the friends ability to invest the funds. The apostrophe of friends is a different color.
Ah, that is microscope out.
It's orange, I think.
It's red. Okay.
And that's my comment.
Wow. Nice catch.
The the other quick thing, Bob, which I'm just going to suggest, under the timing of the director's salary increase.
Yeah.
Second bullet point, I prefer if you you've got the beginning of January, whether than rather than waiting until July. If you don't mind, just add 2021 to both of those, please.
Sure.
Okay, I have no further comments. This is usual great minutes, Bob. We're going to keep you.
You get a raise.
Percentage raise. Are there any other comments to these minutes?
No, thank you.
Other piece.
I'm sorry, Muir.
I have just one other very small thing under public comment. The second the second of the dented bullet points, Harry read the requirements for remote meeting should be either for a remote meeting or for remote meetings. Other than that, it looks great.
Okay, thank you.
So picky, Muir. Um, if that's it, may I please have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the as amended. This was Kate.
A second, Laura.
So we're going to do roll call, Laura.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Dick. Dick.
Let's do this. Yes.
Thank you. Kate.
Yes.
Donna. Maya.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, yes.
Very, yes, so unanimously approved. Thank you very much, Bob.
You're welcome.
So big boss, you're on with the director's report, please.
Yeah. Just sharing my screen, so of course, hold on. There we go. There's the right thing. Alrighty, so just about to the end of the seventh month of our fiscal year, which is about 58% of the year completed. Kind of on on schedule as as we have been the last few months. Salary is just about steady. Entering into those large spending months for electricity and heating. And the others. You know, we've we've paid our book service for the year. We've been paying for some STEM programs for children through our program line. Paid our CW Mars network membership. We got some catching up to do on our library materials, which will not be a problem. And yeah. No major surprises here. Any questions?
Looks good.
Okay. Yeah, and so we have, we have begun to accrue some charges on our contract services line for our strategic plan consultant. So she's keeping track of that and we'll make those payments when we need to. But as as usual, springtime is usual, usually the time we pay our our some of our annual membership fees or subscriptions or or expenses from library materials and office supplies. Yeah, so FY22 budget update as well, we did receive. Remember if it was before last meeting or just after we did receive a target budget from the town manager. Budget subcommittee met, we discussed and we did submit requests back to the town manager on January 7th. I have now have a meeting scheduled with her next week, Monday morning and we'll discuss what we asked for, some of our needs and anticipated expenses. And then February 18th, which is the evening of our next meeting. I have a tentative tentatively scheduled meeting with the finance committee to discuss the budget requests as well. So that we'll we'll have to plan for that somehow for our next trustee meeting, whether you guys continue without me or we we call a shorter meeting, I think it was 7:30. My schedule, my my schedule, I'm scheduled with the finance committee, so I can try and move that later or I can stick with it.
You know, this is Dick, is that is that a Zoom meeting?
I assume so. But I don't, I don't know that for sure. I was not included in the initial message. We're kind of, it was kind of just a tentative. Let me know if if those the scheduled times don't work for you and we'll try and accommodate so, but I do, I would assume it's a so Zoom meeting.
If it's a Zoom meeting, we could all join in.
That's an interesting point, yeah. We could all migrate over.
Muir, just a suggestion, maybe we could start our meeting slightly earlier as well.
Okay. I'm open, open to the possibilities. If you anyone has strong feelings. That would be a good time.
No, I think that's probably probably a good idea. You know, it all depends on the on the agenda and the the number of corrections to the minutes, how long the how long the meeting takes. So but you know, if we started at 6:30ish. That that might that might work actually, and it would be interesting if it isn't Zoom to be able to be able to check in.
Yeah, you guys don't usually get to get to see me perform in that that scenario. All right, so maybe 6:30 early enough, I can contact Neil and try and try and verify that that's what we're scheduled for. And then we'll plan to wrap up by 7:30 and I'll switch, we'll switch over to the finance committee meeting. Sounds like a plan. And I'm looking at my next section here and I realize this might be an earlier version of the director's report that I meant to send you guys. We did have Debbie attend our annual resource sharing meetings for CW Mars. She will share with us info from that, I think that was last week. She'll share with us the next time we meet as a staff, which likely will be this coming week. Since last meeting, we've also submitted our continuity of operations outline, or I've met with the consultant from the Collins Center and he's gathered data to complete that first step. The continuity of operations plan, obviously been working on budget materials. Working on annual report materials for the town. And staff has been continuing curbside and browsing appointments. And those have been going well.
Excuse me, Muir.
Yep.
Um, what is the continuity of operations outline plan? Where does that go or who is that for?
That's a, so it's a, the town received grant funding to complete with the help of the Collins Center. A plan for situations like the pandemic when operations needed to continue and the the continuity of operations plan itself kind of documents, processes and functions and who's responsible for them, where the funding comes from, who's involved in decision making regarding, you know, regarding each function. So it's it's kind of a documentation of how it works, but also a document that's meant to help organize operations in the event of, you know, emergency catastrophe. Stressful times.
Okay.
What happens if there's a natural disaster, a pandemic, et cetera, et cetera. How does the town continue to deliver services? The same same services possible. So each each department is contributing to that and come up with a document in the end that will help with that. Programs, we are are ramping up our virtual programming presence Beanstack. We've we've had a winter reading challenge for January, which has been going very well, more than 30,000 minutes logged halfway, about halfway through the challenge. It's been a real benefit to have Beanstack to kind of stay in touch with some of our readers in the time when not as many people are coming to the library and able to come to the library. The friends were the ones who purchased that for us, so definitely thanks to them. But a great creepy Christmas program with Jeff Bellinger right before Christmas. More than 35 people showed up on Zoom to to hang out and listen to that. The, excuse me, the January home downsizing program, I think it was the 14th, was also very well attended, 30 about, I think it was ended up being 37 attendees, not 35. And you know, programming staff is continuing to work on finalizing summer reading. And scheduling out programs for the rest of FY21. We are aiming for at least one adult program per month on Zoom. And we kind of, we've got another cooperative program coming, it's actually a series of programs through February and into March about travel. I think there are six sessions that'll be once a week that we are co-hosting with the Bigelow Memorial Free Library in Clinton and several other partners. I don't know everyone who's joined up on that, but it should be well attended as well, I think, with that many programs joining in. And I think it's the perfect time of year for that type of type of escapism. The other, the other real highlight for me has been the STEM programs that Debbie's been putting on for children. She talks a little bit about it in the document she wrote up for you guys, but she does about 10 or 12 take home kits that are provided by his name is Chris Rodriguez and he's an engineer, I believe, so the kids get a kit with with some various things that will go into what they build. And then he does a Zoom program, walks them through it, answers questions and and teaches some STEM concepts, science, technology, engineering, math type things. We've been paying for those with the the town, the town program line, which has been fantastic to have, and I think that's really delivering a great return, return value on that investment. So those are, we're doing those about once a month. And obviously the numbers on that with only 10 or 12 kits is a little lower than than we would typically have at children's programs, but it's also outside of Debbie's expertise, so something we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. It's a real deep quality experience for children who attend, so good feedback on that and we'll keep that going.
Muir.
Yes, Laura.
Do you record many of the Zoom programs to put on YouTube?
We do, when we have permission, we have been trying to do that, yes, so it hasn't been every one that we've done. But the record, for instance, the recording of J D, oh man. The the author who wrote the the slave, wow, I'm blanking on the title too. The Kidnap Club about New York City and the 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 group of people who were kidnapping both free blacks and former slaves and sending them south. JD Webb, I think is his name. That that we recorded and that's available on our YouTube channel, so some things are up there.
So you have to get permission from the presenter?
Yeah, typically. Like Jeff Bellinger, he does your programs several times a week with different libraries and other organizations. So not, I don't think that he's as willing to to give, just as an example, willing to give give us permission to record and and host it on YouTube, but you know, some things we are able to do. No major major updates with the building. We've got security camera upgrades and additions work scheduled in February. Friends Endowment is paying for that. Thank you, Friends. Kit's been bringing a few cleaning company representatives through the building. Or some contract bids that are are coming up. But luckily, it's been pretty quiet on the building front. We did just buy a GoPro camera and some related equipment so that we can continue to create some programming content. Things that don't go on Zoom, for instance, Debbie's Storytime. Rob Invenicia is doing another winter sewing program, which was really popular last year, and I think a great, a great choice for for this year too, for people to try out. We'll have kits to go with that. She just recorded her kind of demo Tuesday evening this week using the new equipment, so that's been already been a blessing to have. We'll also plan to offer the GoPro camera and the equipment as part of our library of things after after things quiet down with the pandemic. Also been working on the technology plan for the for the library, so technology is something that goes obsolete relative on a fairly regular schedule, so you can plan, plan your upgrades and then kind of working through that slowly, but that'll be a good thing to have. Was reminded of the importance of that as we were discussing with our strategic plan consultant this yesterday. My last little tidbit for you in the report is a nice little table of data that Lydia put together for me with in library browsing appointment data from the last four months. So this doesn't include January. And you can see totaled the number of visits we got during each each appointment time that we have. So at 6 o'clock on Monday evenings through the month of September, a total of seven people came into the library to visit, so on those four or five September Mondays. Seven people came, for instance, so it's, you know, it's an interest, interesting to look at this, obviously, the Tuesday and the Thursday afternoon time slots are most popular, which we already knew. The the biggest surprise to me, I think, was the that October was the busiest month that we've seen and both November and December were you know, less, less busy. But about and about the same in the end. Almost eight hundred people have visited in person though, since we started offering browsing appointments. And that's the end of my report. Any questions for me? Harry?
Who funded the GoPro?
What did I do with that? We got it off of Amazon, so it will be coming out of our library materials line. I did it that way because we were planning to circulate it. At some point in the near future, so it, I think we ended up spending about two hundred dollars on that.
Yeah, I'm curious if it was the Friends.
It wasn't the Friends this time.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Stop that screen sharing. Any other questions for me?
Him, you're on the director's report. There's still the bullet point of reopening or shutting down update. Can you just cover that?
Yep, so we are continuing with the in in-person browsing appointments at the same times that we've been doing it, we are still offering curbside appointments. Curbside pickups, still delivery service between libraries, courier service is still running. There have been a number of libraries who've closed temporarily, but the majority are remaining open. There are a few who are stepping back to just curbside appointments. This stage, we are still offering our very limited in-person browsing. And, you know, part of the reason we waited as long as we did to start that and did it in the way we did it was so that we would kind of, we would be able to be rather constant and consistent with it. If something drastic happens, we can certainly roll it back very quickly, but rather than changing, you know, that plan consistency there certainly seems beneficial as far as our patrons expectations of of how they can use the library, so.
Can I just ask a quick question here? When you are tracking, how many people visit? Are you tracking appointments or are you tracking people, like persons?
Those would be the same. Everyone that comes in patron wise has an appointment.
So if it's a family with children, are you counting that as three or one?
Each person has an appointment, so it'd be one, one for each person that comes in and and an appointment for each person as well.
Okay.
So so we do ask, you know, a parent who is signing up children to to come visit that everyone that will be coming to the library has a slot. So at any point, we're capped at at ten P, ten visitors to the library, which doesn't include the staff, it doesn't include deliveries or, you know, kit from the DPW or Dan if he's he's in the building. But even with those extras, we are well below the the twenty five percent capacity that we are that we're required to be at for the building. You muted again.
Sorry, there hasn't been any confusion about that with any families coming and showing up with several people.
Yeah, certainly, definitely, you know, there's, especially early on, there were a couple of times when when they were coming in, they're they're more than had signed up. And basically, what we do is sign them up as as they come in. So we just add them to the the browsing appointments. And if if it pushes us over the capacity, at this point, we're not you know, we would ask someone to pick, you know, you signed up for three to come in, you've got five, just pick which three you want to come in. If if we were at capacity and we have not, we've not been at, you know, ten ten, ten visitors for a slot for quite a while, since before Christmas.
You are?
Yes, Bob.
Is the twenty five percent capacity, is that the current state guideline?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the confusion, whatever confusion there was early on, we've set it up and trained staff to be able to adapt if necessary. And, you know, the number has luckily worked out that ten is is not you know, we don't fill up ten slots very often, so.
It was ten twenty five percent capacity, that is the actual cap?
No, no, twenty twenty five percent is is more than that. Alrighty, so let's see. Am I on for the next agenda item as well? I am. So let's, we'll switch over to trustee handbook. Really, so I sent, I included, both sent in the email and included in the folder the shorter of our trustee handbook documents. The one that's a little easier to get into and and makes for a nice introduction to the topic. There it is. Dick's got his physical copy there. There it is. So if you if you haven't read this, I would take the fifteen or twenty minutes that it would take to to get through this. Make sure you do. It is, it makes things pretty clear. Digestible as well. And it includes kind of the highlights, the key points for for you guys to understand as trustees. What my plan would be for for the next, you know, however many meetings it it will take. I think we can chunk it, chunk down the handbook itself into smaller pieces. But what I'll do is send out bits of the handbook and we can, during each meeting, we'll have a little bit of time, we can do maybe a quick discussion, answer questions if there are any. I don't think it's it's terribly I don't, you know, there may be a question here and there, but I think it's it's pretty straightforward. It's just a matter of us taking a little time and making sure we all know what we should know. But from the this trustee pocket guide, I think there are a couple important things. The first thing that I've I've started and I'll I'll finish before our next meeting. And that would be a the trustee checklist, so that any new trustees like Laura. You know, it'd be great to have these ten things to be able to hand to them or just say, here's where you can find it. Because I'm, what I'm going to do is put, put these things in a, in a folder in our Google Drive folder, so that as soon as a new trustee has has access to that material. They'll be able to say, here's the welcome packet. If you will, and be able to look at, you know, the schedule of meetings. Packets from recent meetings, your budgets. Some of the the major laws that are important to understand. Mission, goals, strategic plan, which hopefully by the time we have a new trustee, we'll we'll definitely have a strategic plan done. Some of the important policies and procedures, those things. So that that I'll have wrapped up by the next meeting easily. But it'd be good to have your feedback on what's in there, if it's in legible format, organized well, you know, whatever, whatever feedback you do have. So I'll I'll shoot you guys a message when it, when it's put together. Laura, you in particular, I think would be, your feedback would be really valuable. As we're going through this, you know, I think the other, the other nice bit of information that's kind of introductory, but the the areas of responsibility that are that are the trustees, and I think you guys have a great understanding of this, but it's it's always good to go over it again. So the guide breaks down trustees' responsibility into six major areas, the legal, governance and policymaking, financial, strategic planning, human resources and continuing education. So for us, you know, the legal, the legal thing is is important. The the board is the connection between the operation and and our our laws, town bylaws and and state laws. We also bring policies to the board. We do some policy work together. So when we need a new policy, we create that as a board. And you guys get final say as to whether it's adopted or not. Financial, you know, we've got our budget subcommittee and ultimately the financial health of the library is is the the Board of Trustees' responsibility. So understanding that, that's part of why I give you guys a monthly report of the finances. It's kind of big picture, but you know, that that's, that that goes along with the responsibilities to keep the the library financially healthy. So understanding both the library budget, but also the townwide budget is important with that. Knowing where we fit in with with the the townwide budget is important. You know, we're, you know, less than two percent of the townwide budget, but which is incredible, but where we do a lot of good work with that that small amount of funding. Strategic planning, we're working on our strategic plan right now. Thank you, Laura, Dick and Maya. We've we've had great fun with that. Human resources, you guys hire the director and and ultimately supervise me. Even though you don't get, you know, a picture necessarily of the day-to-day part of human resources in the library. You are connected with it through me. We are lucky enough to to have a human resources director here in town and, you know, she's she's been a good connection for me to have as I've been guiding the library in its daily operation. And continuing education, that's another thing that we've kind of talked about as goals and 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 you and I kind of share. I think a value of our staff continuing to get education and training and and the support and resources that they need to evolve in the library field. Yeah, so, you know, I think we also have a great understanding that working together is is the way we get things done. We've we've both talked about that in your review of of my work, but also we've acknowledged the importance of partnering with other organizations, other individuals, other town departments in our remarks. And so the the guide goes into some more detail, but I think, you know, we've hit the major pieces. If you really are into the the legal aspect of it, there's lots of reading that even just this guide points you to sections of the 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 state laws, which are, you know, easily accessed online. If 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 you are looking through that or you would like to look through that and you're not quite where sure where to start, I can, I can get you connected with the states really well-functioning online presence for for laws. And then, you know, I think the last thing that that I'd like to pull out here, the the tips for success, good section, I think. But I think it also in going over this and and looking at it again, it reminds me how great a board we have. Because you guys are are really on top of this, whether it's because you've you've read the guide lately or not. You guys, you guys do a really good job of all of this, this stuff. But being active, informed and responsible, you guys ask questions, you listen to my reports, even when I go on too long. And and you you really, you know, whether whether it's it's Dick coming to concerts or, you know, wondering and asking about programs that's happening in the teen room like like as Kate does. You're you all, you are all very active. Understanding roles and responsibility and some of that, some of that comes from my predecessors, you know, Martha, I'm I'm sure is a huge part of why you guys understand. You know, the the roles of a trustee, part of why you're so active and informed. And why you're so supportive of of the director, whether it's it's me or or was her. Including the director and board meetings, that's, you know, kind of a no-brainer. You know, we we we, although we, as a group, often have different opinions and and different perspectives on things. I I can't remember the last time anyone voted, you know, against against the other members of the board, which is remarkable. Confidential information, you know, I don't know that that's been terribly relevant to to anything we've done lately, but you, I would certainly trust all of you to respect confidential information when when we go over it. Being the library's eyes and ears, you guys talk with neighbors, you understand what's happening in the town, and and that's part of, part of why the library is so healthy, because we have that that connection between, you know, the operation, the director and the staff and the residents. And we even have some staff people who are residents. So you know, I think connecting to other other boards, we have Michael Ray, who's who's been a a great person to work with in in the short time that he's been our liaison with the select board. But continuing those and and continuing those types of relationships with other elected officials, appointed officials. Just another aspect of being active. You know, number seven, I don't, I I think if we if we were to have an issue, certainly, I think you guys would would be very comfortable referring things back to me as, you know, I am the one responsible for day-to-day operations of the library, so. You know, you guys are also very, very willing to acknowledge successes and and to say that I'm doing a good job and the staff is doing a good job and, you know, tonight's meeting is no different. We've already, we've already had an acknowledgement of thanks to Laura, some of the recognition that the the library has gotten recently, so. You guys are are great and and it's it's, I'm very lucky to have such a a wonderful Board of Trustees to work with, so. Keep up with the good work. But also realize how how good a job you guys do as trustees, so thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys, for for you, for any who looked through the guide, did you have questions that came up that we could talk about here before we go to the next agenda item? Were there any questions? Okay, so the handbook itself is obviously quite a bit longer, goes into a lot more detail. I'll break it down for you. I'll put in a section into each monthly folder. And if you can read that ahead of the meeting, we'll discuss or talk about questions. Major issue, major, you know, ideas in each section. And we'll we'll chunk it down into digestible bits. And that, so that's our, that's our trustee handbook for the month. Thanks for bearing with me.
That was a nice overview.
All right, so let's see. Strategic Plan Subcommittee Update is me again, so I'll I'll keep it going. So since last meeting, we have finalized our selection of Barbara Friedman, who is a former staff member of the Ritter Memorial Library before the library moved to its new building. So there's a great connection there. She's a, she, I think, lives in Ashburn, Hampshire. She's local as well. We had three great possibilities for a consultant to work with and and she unanimously with the subcommittee was was the best choice. And I think she's already demonstrated that she was the right choice for us. We've met with her officially three times as a subcommittee. And and worked on the strategic plan so far. So she's drafted a kind of a bang-up strategic plan already. We've, we've got a list of focus group questions that we've gone over with her. She's given us a bunch of resources to think about. We've been listing community members that we'd like to include in our focus groups and beginning to brainstorm. Community members that we'd like to include in our focus groups, and beginning to brainstorm. Ways to ensure that we get people to participate in those meetings. And we planned, we've been meeting with her weekly so far, and we we plan to continue that for the near future. And so we'll meet with her this coming week and go over survey questions for the survey that we'll probably send out after the focus group meetings. I think we're targeting late February, maybe for focus groups, early March. But it feels like we're moving right along, that's for sure.
If I could, if I could chime in, this is, this is, she, she has exceeded. Any expectations, I think, that any of us on the subcommittee have. In terms of pulling together information, she went through all of our past, like, town. The reports that that were done for the town, synthesized all the goals, put all the goals together. Came up with, you know, other other libraries and other pieces, but she's been very, very proactive in the time in between the meetings. So that by the time we we get together, there's, you know, a a an hour productivity where. We're not hemming and hawing and going from here to there, but it really is very focused, and she just. You know, she has an intimate knowledge of the library system, as well as Lunenburg as a as a town and stuff. So it's really been. You know, by the time we're through, we're we're generally laughing, and we can't believe how much there is that's already done, so. Was definitely, definitely a good choice, and it's a, it's a good little subcommittee to be to be working on, so. Kudos.
Yeah. Well done, subcommittee.
Yes.
May I just, Muir, I, I just want to thank all members of the subcommittee for being so diligent and spending the time that you're spending. I was really annoyed with Muir when he didn't answer my call one day, and he said, oh, I'm sorry, I have more important things to do, I'm on with the. Strategic Plan Subcommittee, so. Thank you, guys. I I know that you're spending the time and and hopefully it will be well worth it, so.
Any other details the you, Laura or Maya, want to add to that? Before we head to the next agenda item?
No, I mean, you know, she's, um, she's willing to ask questions that might be somewhat uncomfortable. But she's also willing to take the answers and incorporate them in her feedback, so it's, it's a, she's, she's good. We all, all four, four of us work well together, or one, two, three, four, five, wow. I forgot to count myself.
Muir, let me just make one comment, I I'm not at all surprised, having worked with Barbara. Everything you said, so give her our regards, and we're delighted that she's been hired.
I I have a question, hey Laura, so I, if I remember correctly, we kind of encouraged you to be on this committee. And I I'm just curious, as a new trustee, your. Experience of being a part of this.
Find it interesting, and there's a lot of things talked about, you know, going into strategic plan that helped me learn. About the whole system. I'm glad I did it. Pushed me too hard.
Well, we're we're definitely glad that Laura is part of the subcommittee, she's, she made some excellent points and connections about things that are happening in town. And asked some excellent questions and contributed. As as all of all three trustee members of the subcommittee have, but. We are appreciative that you've joined us, Laura.
I'm enjoying it.
So, thank you, Muir, so friends update, I think there is no friends update because there were no meeting, correct?
Correct, they canceled their January meeting.
Oh, I do have just one question, are we still doing the pop up book sales?
Yep, they're continuing, weather dependent. If like today, Robin, Robin came in and arranged her carts just in time for the little squall that lasted all day. And so the book carts didn't go out today, but. Yep, they're continuing, the not, the numbers are not quite as high as as they have been, but, you know, most days, there there are people. Perusing what we've got on offer, so.
And you're still not taking books, correct, for the friends?
Yeah, we really have, I mean, the numbers, the number of books that we've sold is is not.
Not enough.
Not enough to create space.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Muir, as as always. Are there any board comments?
I would like to make a board comment.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm, I'm, I'm Richard Mayu, like, Little Eighty Eight Laurel Lane, that sounds like town meeting thing. I I signed up and 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 got onto Canopy today. Because there was, I don't know where where it came across, maybe it came across on Facebook or whatever, but. About a a new la- last Wednesday of the month. Thing with a discussion for short films, and the short films are available on Canopy, but there are also some other long films. And some good stuff there, but I thought that was, that's another, another great way, especially if it gets out there, and I know it's going to be in the ledger as well, but. To get, you know, people who might not. Be interested in this or that, but all of a sudden, oh, you mean I can get, you know, if I can get at the library and I can get some films and. And, you know, like a little film discussion thing, and the the first, the first one is called Wave. And it it has to do with a, I guess, a true story of a guy who wakes up after five years in a coma speaking a language. That nobody knows, but it's a full developed language, and it's really, if you get on Canopy and and look it up, it's it's. Well, well worth the fifteen minutes for the for the film, although it does, it's just scratching your head at the end, but. But again, it is just another thing that the library provides that is really phenomenal and and a real plus for the. For the community, so kudos to the the director and the staff, whoever puts all that stuff together, because it works.
Yeah, I I signed up for that, too, and I've watched a bunch of things, there's a lot of stuff on there.
Yeah, I think it's a great resource, it it kind of aligns. More closely with with library mission than, say, Netflix, if there were a way to do Netflix in that way. And, you know, what Lydia is is trying out is fantastic, and I hope, I hope people will join, join that discussion.
Absolutely.
Are there any other board comments? I have a comment. I I don't, and this is directed at Michael Ray, I don't, I think you. I know you missed our December meeting, but I don't know if you were at the previous meeting, but. On behalf of all of the trustees, I just want to thank you for bringing to our attention that we have the opportunity. To change the date of Muir's increase to January first. It was a really proactive thing that you did, and we appreciate that very much.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. It's it's always good to be helpful, you know?
Just the funny thing, and Muir, you're gonna be mad at me, but that's okay. Heather actually reached out to me and said, just to clarify, are you making it retroactive to July? Or is it as of January? I told her the truth. Anyway, but Mike, or thank you, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other board comments?
I have a comment, but I'm a a member of the board.
Yes, you are.
So, I just wanted to, Muir touched upon it earlier today, so the town manager and I speak often. And, you know, we are about to go through the budget cycle, and the preliminary information that the town manager has provided to us. And we also had a meeting on this past Tuesday with our. State delegation, so our representative and senator in the in the house. To kind of go over some of our priorities as the select board. But also to kind of get that relationship established, since both Senator Cronin and Representative Sina are new. Now, they both were voted in recently, or last year. So, anyway, during the, during our meeting with them, it was really, you know, we we have this, like I said, really positive rapport. But the initial indications from the state are that are cautiously optimistic. In terms of what the financial impact is really going to be from this pandemic, so as we, as we may know, we're always in a look back. So we're always looking at the previous year's income to kind of assess what we're going to plan for the next year. So even though we're going through this pandemic and we're in fiscal year twenty-one, with the state, we're really going off of the numbers that happened prior to. The most part of this pandemic happening, so the feel of all this is going to start on July, the first. And so that, that's been the date we've all been concerned about in terms of if state revenue is is decreased substantially. And state revenue, you know, accounts for about fifteen percent of our. Of our budget, there's really no department that can take a fifteen percent cut, or even a a five percent cut, you know, we're all doing. More with less, but so far, the word is that it's cautiously optimistic that the budget, the funds coming in from the state next year will be good. And then on our side, the revenue projection the town manager provided at our meeting this week. Also suggests that our revenue as a town this year is on target. So, what, that's helpful, so that way you guys know that going into next year, certainly, I can't say that there won't be any cuts anywhere. But it's looking positive that that if there are going to be some, that they won't be, they won't be really painful.
Thank you. Hey, Michael, how's your leg?
It is seventy percent, seventy percent. So I bought it, I put on, you know, not being able to move around so much, I certainly put on some weight, so I bought a exercise bike, now it just needs to stop staring at me and.
They make, they make great clothes racks, Michael, right? They just, you know, they're great places to hang stuff. I I had a, I had a treadmill like that, it was, you know.
Thank you for asking.
You're very welcome. Any other comments? So, any other business? So it is now seven forty-nine, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, that was Nick.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, Kate.
Okay, Laura?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Certainly.
Kate?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Michael Ray?
Yes.
Muir?
Yes.
Okay, so at seven forty-nine, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.
Have a safe drive, Harry.
Thank you all.
I I I think that our resolution should be to have some more strife and give you more trouble as a board.
Some more yelling.
Little drama here, this is so boring.
He'll just have his wife bring in the baby, and then we can do it, we're just all gonna go, oh, look at the pretty baby.
I'm surprised he's not the one that's yelling right now, it's past his bedtime a little bit.
My son's in the background making a heck of a racket, which is why I kept muting myself. Right now, though.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night and take care.